Sorry, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for making an effort to be here tonight as well. Thank you so much. No, this is an additional meeting for you. Thank you. The first order of business is to receive oral comment from members of the public. Members of the public may address the Select Board for up to three minutes, longer with permission of the Chairperson. The Select Board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This Agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the Chair. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Can we just establish quorum for ours?
Yes, please do.
We'll also do the our oral, unless we're dressed up, could address during this time.
Absolutely.
So roll call to establish quorum. Marshall, do you want to call the names?
I will. So we have Erica Jacobson.
Here.
Linda Allen.
Here.
Jean Case. Frank Visconti.
Here.
Joel Lee.
Here.
Tom Howard. And Marshall Justerson is here as well. We have a quorum.
Okay, so as the Chair of the Finance Committee stated that we'll receive public comment for the Finance Committee as well. Do we have any public comment tonight? Come on up.
Hi, good evening. Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street. I've had some people request that I find out if our food truck rules and regs or any of that has been put into place with all of the summer activities that are going to be going on. And they tend to get booked up really fast. I didn't have an answer for them, so I said I would come and just seek one out for them.
Oh, that's wonderful.
What did you just say? What? The food truck?
Yeah, what their regulations are going to be as far as, you know, like at Spencer Little Farm or during Newbury Town Day.
I understand what you're asking. So if that's the Board of Health, the Board of Health handles the food trucks, so.
Wasn't it something we were gonna, I just remember like, I think it was before COVID that we even talked about this, but it was just how they were going to set up in order for licensing and all that?
I don't believe that the Select Board has a policy in place for that. I don't, yeah, I don't believe we do.
Okay.
If there was one, it was never moved forward, so I would advise you to ask folks to contact the Board of Health.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Building Mail, 12 Orchard Street. I just wanted to clarify a misinterpretation that was on social media. If you look at the Veterans Services page on the town website, you see Karen Tyler and her admin is listed there. My name is listed there as the Veterans Grave Officer, and Mike Doyle's name is there, because Mike is a liaison from the Select Board for the veterans. We do not, Mike and I do not work for Karen Tyler. She's not our manager. She's not our boss. Someone tried to spin a story about that, and it's not true.
Okay.
Okay. Second of all, I want to retract something that I said at the last meeting. I was under duress when I spoke, and I said that as far as this Purple Heart activity is concerned, I would see through that once the proclamation is signed, that I would get the plaques up on the highway, so on and so forth. But I believe I stated I would not be involved with any festivities or celebration or ceremony on August 7th. That is not correct. I have never given up on any task in my life that I have committed to. It's not my character. It's not who I am. I will definitely make sure that a proper respectful ceremony takes place honoring all veterans, all WASs from the town of Newbury.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Any additional public comment? Hop out for the Finance Committee? Going once? Going twice?
Come on, someone.
Thank you. So I'm going to move down the agenda. So first, we have the Board and Committee reports, the report of the Chair. I signed the PR 2218 for Julie O'Brien and the PR 2218 for the Select Board. We have grants, gifts, and donations, Chapter 44, Section 53A, Grants and Gifts Acceptance and Expenditures. So the Fire Department received the Senior Safer Grant for $2,855.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearings, we have none. New business, we have to approve a request for public property use for Byfield Newbury Baseball Softball League, Pearson Field, Lunt Street. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
There are two forms. Do we need two motions?
Yeah, we're going to take one at a time. One's for Lunt Street and the other one's for the Upper Green. Thank you, Jerry. So this is for Lunt Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve requests for public property use. Byfield Newbury Baseball Softball League for the Upper Green Field.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approve business license renewal for Richard Rocco Incorporated, DBA Plum Island Provisions, 29 Plum Island Boulevard, a common vicueller license.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We have approve a commercial clam permit application for Orion Meter, 93 Main Street in Byfield.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have to sign an amended liquor license for Plum Island Beach Coma, Inc. The ABCC approval, permanent outdoor seating came back, and now we need to sign it.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have to approve and sign the Newbury, the town of Newbury Purple Heart Community proclamation.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve election worker appointments as listed in red for the term 4122 to 123122.
You want to take them individual or as a whole?
I think we should take them as a whole. If there's a name here, somebody wants to put a hold on, just shout out "hold."
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Maxine Balkis for Oak Terrace, Johanna Barry, 28 Hay Street, Esther Bernier, 55 Elm Street, Nancy Burke, 10 Larkin Road, Alexander Burke, 10 Larkin Road, Donna Callahan, 4 Torrey Lane, Carolyn Casey, 6 Forest Street, Deb Casey, 64 Carter Street, number eight in Newburyport, Wanda Crowe, 28 Hay Street, Janine Cunningham, 143 Scotland Road, Elaine Demers, 88 High Road, Lisa Dorville, 46 Low Street, John Elwell, 226 High Street in Newburyport, Susan Emanuelson, 26 Scotland Heights, Heidi Fram, 21 Forest Street, Wendy Kaminsky, 12 Birch Lane, Marlene Coslow, 36 Caldwell Farm Road, Terry Literest, 45 Northern Boulevard, Jessica McHale, 60 Old Rowley Road, Wilma McDonald, 229 North End Boulevard in Salisbury, Kathy Muse, 10 Marsh Ave., 10 Marsh Avenue, Dave O'Neil, 31 Pearson Drive, Bernadette Powers, 11 Central Street, Unit 1, Molly Seamus, 35 Hanover Street, Nancy Thurlow, 26 Marsh Avenue, Irene Troy, 4 F Street in Newburyport, Martha Webb, 56 High Road, Joan Wayburn, 4 Hart's Way in Rowley, and Kristen Zarkades, 6 Lunt Street in Newburyport. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So next, we have a presentation on draft compliance guidelines for multifamily zoning requirements for the MBTA communities. No, we're going to get right here. This is our people.
Hi. Hi, good evening. First of all, I apologize. I seem to be losing my voice, so this may be not the best presentation for you. So I'm Martha Taylor, the Newbury Planning Director, and I am going to pass out the guidelines and zoning, which I'll be discussing. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
So this is a presentation regarding legislation that was passed back in January of 2021, requiring all communities that are considered to be MBTA communities to pass a zoning bylaw allowing multifamily housing by right within a certain distance of an MBTA station. The slides that you'll see tonight are a combination of slides that were prepared by me, Tallerman, and Costa, and also MVPC. And I'm going to go through, sorry, the introduction and purpose, a timeline for compliance.
Hard to talk about. As or by right, is that the same enabling act as 40B, or has that even got more close? I mean, what does that mean?
It's different.
More powerful or less powerful?
I would say, yeah. Yeah, I'll be getting into that a little bit.
Okay, good.
But by right means that it can't, we can't require a special permit for it. We can have site plan review. 40B actually is a comprehensive permit process, so that's a much more involved.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll get into that a little bit as we go forward. So what it means for Newbury as an MBTA community, summary of what the guidelines say, what the requirements are for the town, and the effect of noncompliance, and you can actually go on to the next slide and the one after, please. So as I said, back in January of 2021, the state adopted or passed legislation regarding MBTA communities and added a Section 3A to Chapter 40A of the general laws. This requires that an MBTA community shall have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. So no special permit, nothing like that. It can be subject to site plan review and meets other criteria set forth in the statute. Of particular note are the fact that this district needs to have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, not more, be not more than half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable. And the purpose of this is to encourage MBTA communities to adopt zoning districts where multifamily zoning is permitted as of right. So, next slide, please. So I thought I would read the legislation to you just so you hear it in its entirety. It says, "An MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, provided, however, that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions." So unlike Caldwell Farm, which is age restricted to 55 and over, this cannot be age restricted, "and shall be suitable for families with children," so you can't create a whole bunch of housing with one bedroom. "For the purposes of this section, a district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, subject to any further limitations imposed by Section 40 of Chapter 131 and Title V." So that's the septic requirements of the State Environmental Code, "and be located not more than half a mile from commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable." Next slide, please. So just to be clear, this is not, it's a zoning mandate. It's not a production mandate, so we're not expected to build all of these units, but we need to zone for them. Next slide, please. So we are considered a commuter rail station because we are within, our municipal boundary is within half a mile of the Newburyport train station. And you can see on this slide the, sort of the other municipalities in our area which are considered either adjacent communities, which are the light green, or commuter MBTA communities. So all the darker green ones. Next slide, please. So for each community, there are kind of two metrics here. One is that the area for this district must comprise at least 50 acres of land and have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. So if you look at this chart here, you'll see that for Newbury, that actually means 750 units, which is almost a quarter of our existing housing stock. Because under the 2020 census, we have 3,092 units.
Martha, does that count as 40B housing? Does that reach our quota?
It's not 40B housing. This is totally separate.
And it doesn't count as 40B housing?
And it doesn't count as 40B housing. We can, as part of it, adopt an inclusionary housing bylaw so that we would require some of it to be affordable housing, and that could help us meet our quota. But they're two, they're two separate things.
It has to be within a half mile?
Well, there are provisions. We'll get into that a little bit, because we've got some severe constraints in that area that's within half a mile. And so the threshold for us is 750 units. There's another metric, which also says that it needs to be 15% in a commuter rail community, as we are, 15% of our housing, and that would be 460 units. So there's a little bit, the 750 is the floor. And you can see some of the other communities are also, like Rowley has fewer housing units than we do, and their threshold, their base is still 750 units. Next slide, please. So under this legislation, DHCD, along with MBTA and MassDOT, were tasked to develop some guidelines. These guidelines were promulgated in December, December 15 of last year, and that sets up a whole bunch of requirements that we need to follow, both in terms of meeting deadlines and also kind of flushing out the requirements for the MBTA community. One of the first requirements is that we actually need to make a presentation to the Select Board by May 2 of this year. And the reason that we wanted to do it before the end of this month is that the comment period ends on March 31st.
So are you preparing comments?
So I will be preparing comments, and if any of you have any comments, or questions, or things that you want to pass on to the state, please let me know. And there may be, MVPC has talked about doing a regional letter, but I think we should also do ours because we do have some very specific concerns.
What if we decide not to?
If, that's actually one of the last ones.
No, not to go along, what is, what's the punishment?
So right now, what they're saying, noncompliance means that we will not be eligible for certain grant programs. One is the Housing Choice Program.
Are those, I mean, are these good grants?
They are. They are significant grants. Mass Works, so the Housing Choice.
So they bribe you with mandated housing, with more mandated housing?
Well, it's kind, yeah, it's kind of a house.
Have we ever gotten these grants before in the past?
I don't think we've, we've applied.
We've applied.
Yeah, like the Mass Works grant, we applied for several years ago for improvements in Byfield Center. We actually did not get that one. But those, Mass Works are infrastructure grants, and they can be quite significant, up to about $3 million. So if we have infrastructure or needed to have infrastructure, they would fund, they would fund those.
We need to keep in mind what it'll do to our fire department, where we need different apparatus for bigger buildings, capacity of our schools, you know, town staffing to some point, police, everything that goes along with population jump like that.
Join the morning comments.
But again, the state has emphasized that this isn't a mandate to build them. It's a mandate to zone for them. So there'll be, there will be constraints with our, you know, just with our soils, our lack of infrastructure.
Yeah, so I have a question about that. If we mandate us to zone for 750, a minimum number of 700 units, but logistically, we just can't do that because it's too wet, it's 61A, or whatever it is, we just, you know, it's, if we zone for it, we just can't do it, does that prohibit us from these grants?
My understanding is that we need to, we need to do the zoning. We have to develop an action plan to get the zoning in place. It needs to be, the zoning needs to be approved, and the action plan need to be approved by DHCD. If in the end, a developer comes in and can't build the septic that's required to support the number of units, I don't know that we would be penalized for it, but.
I mean, the old JRM sites about the only place I can think of.
And these can be sites, they don't have to be open parcels. They can be parcels that are already developed. So I've got a map that I'll show, pull up in a couple of minutes. But anyway, the first deadline is getting the comments in by March 31st. The second one is giving the presentation to the Select Board before May 2nd. We also need to submit a form on that date, which, you know, basically says, "Do we comply or don't we comply?" Obviously, we don't comply at this point. Some communities also need to submit some GIS maps, but we're covered on that with, by MVPC. And MVPC will be participating in this, you know, very strongly with us in developing, you know, graphics that we need, identifying areas. We'll also have help from Town Council in developing the zoning and any guidelines that go along with that. Next slide, please. So the next deadline is by December 31st. A community must submit a request for determination of full compliance, which obviously we can't do because we're not compliant, or notify DHCD that there is no existing compliant multifamily zoning district, and submit a proposed action plan. And for a commuter rail community, which we are, the action plan needs to be approved by July 1, 2023, and the multifamily zoning district adoption deadline is December 31, 2024. And within 90 days of adopting the zoning amendment, a community must submit a request for determination of compliance to DHCD. Next slide, please. And that's just kind of a, you know, the graphic of the deadlines. So for us, as a commuter rail community, again, that means that an MBTA community with a commuter rail station within its borders or within half a mile of its border, and no subway station within its borders or within half a mile of its border. And again, for us, that means 750 units, or a quarter of our existing housing units. Next slide, please. And that's the legislation again, but I don't think I need to read it again. So next slide, please. So basically, what this means for Newbury, you can see the MBTA station up there and half mile radius, which actually, the two kind of green areas up there are the MBTA parking lots, and so it's basically from the, you know, the perimeter of those.
Would you like me to magnify that?
Actually, I think, unless you guys would like it magnified.
Good.
But I'll point out a few things here. The pink area on there is the 100-year floodplain. There's kind of a very faint dotted line that's green on the inside. This is all within our water supply protection overlay district, which is on the Bashaw property. You'll see some sort of reverse diagonally hatched areas over on the left-hand side. Those are in agricultural preservation restriction. The area that's got sort of a blobby shape with the horizontal lines, that's the area of critical environmental concern. So you can see we've got a lot of constraints within this half-mile border. That said, we do have some parcels, which actually by themselves meet the 50 acres. One is the Bashaw property, which is 62.6, and that's R 4726. That's where the solar panels are right now. And the JRM parcel itself is 10, 10 acres. So, which is right at the intersection of Route 1 and Middle Road. So DHCD, as I noted, has determined that for these guidelines, 50 acres is the reasonable area. And at 15 units per acre, that's where we get the 750. But DHCD will take into consideration both the area of the district and the district's multifamily unit capacity. They should not be a single development site, but must comprise at least 50 acres of land, or approximately 1/10th of the land within the half-mile radius of the transit station. You can do it as an overlay district, but in order for that to comply, at least one portion of the overlay must include at least 25 contiguous acres of land, and no portion that is less than five contiguous acres will count toward the minimum size requirement. And multifamily districts should be in areas that have safe and convenient access to transit stations for pedestrians and bicyclists to the maximum extent feasible. You know, this is a little difficult for us because Route 1 is there, so you either have to walk along Route 1 or cross Route 1. So, you know, not only would this require, you know, potentially water and sewer infrastructure, but also sidewalks and other kinds of infrastructure. Next slide, please. And next slide, sorry. So we've already talked a little bit about the minimum multifamily unit capacity. So we have to provide an accurate assessment of the number of multifamily housing units that can be developed as of right within the district, referred to as the district's unit capacity. And that capacity must be equal to or greater than a specified percentage of the total number of housing units within the community. For us, as a commuter rail community, that would actually be 15%, which gets us up to 460 units. But again, the floor for us is 750. The estimate is less than the minimum unit capacity, then the MBTA community must change the boundaries of the district or change dimensional regulations or other restrictions of the bylaws to allow for the development of a greater number of multifamily units as of right. And again, it's not a mandate to construct a specified number of housing units or a target. It's only a requirement that the community has a district capable of supporting such development. Next slide, please. So to Jeff's earlier question, as of right means without the need to obtain any discretionary permit or approval, like a special permit. But site plan review may be required for multifamily uses allowed as of right to ensure public safety and convenience, regulated vehicular access and circulation on a site, architectural design of a building, and screening of adjacent properties. And any conditions that are placed on it cannot make a project infeasible or impractical. Next slide, please. As I noted before, the housing cannot have any age restrictions on it, and it has to be suitable for families with children. Next slide, please. Trying, there are a couple of repeated points here, and I don't want to be too repetitive, but the following must be factored into the calculation: limitations on development resulting from inadequate water or wastewater infrastructure, and in areas not served by public sewer, any applicable limitations under Title V of the State Environmental Code, or local septic regulations, known title restrictions on use of the land, such as agricultural preservation restriction, and known physical limitations caused by the presence of water bodies or wetlands, which we know are there.
Martha, what's the price restriction on these houses?
There's no price restriction. It's just simply zoning and allowing it by right.
So in other words, they could make that many houses, and they could be $800,000 houses?
Well, to get the 15 units per acre density, you're looking, you're really looking at multifamily. It's not going to be single, single-family houses. But they can be a mix. You know, if you think of Caldwell Farm, for example, you know, those are four-unit structures and townhouse style, so that could be, could be part of it. There could be another district that has apartment buildings in it. So, you know, it's not, it's not likely to be 15, or single-family houses per acre, but a multifamily of some sort.
Martha, just throw another fly in the ointment. Route 1 traffic circle's going to be done over.
Yes.
And it's like, is, I'm not sure if the JRM land, you know, if that's, is that being affected by the new traffic circle makeover? I don't know what. I don't know what, hey, they, they haven't had a hearing yet with that, but it's like, that's going to affect, I think, that influence, like, if we, if we looked at that area. It seems like a lot going on in that area all at once.
Um, there is, although I don't, I don't know, from what I've seen, I don't know that the traffic circle improvements are going to make any difference to.
It's not going to affect.
To this, I don't think so. I don't think so.
All right.
So, excuse me, one second. Martha, if, if we, this is zoning, so it has to be approved at town meeting.
Yes, yeah.
If town meeting doesn't approve it, we just don't get the grants, right?
Uh, if it doesn't approve it, I'm not quite sure what happens. Um, just, this is, the state has already passed legislation allowing a simple majority for, um, zoning such as this multifamily within, you know, close to transit. So it doesn't need the supermajority or the two-thirds majority that you do for other kinds of zoning. It would be a simple majority.
Okay. Mary Hannah, please.
Um, down by the train, there's a, a new apartment building?
Yes.
Does that count at all, or is it too early?
It's a new report.
It's a new report.
Yeah, it's a, yeah. It's a, it's a Newbury Ports District, and that was down as part of a forty R.
Okay.
Um, they might be able to count that, but that's not ours, unfortunately.
All right.
I mean, actually, Martha, the punitive part of this might come when, if we don't have land that's really suitable or it's already in use within that half a mile and the soils and the whole five yards, if we, you know, have to really go out as far as a mile, then you start to get some densely populated houses that aren't even close to the railroad station.
Right, right. I mean, you.
That's road traffic and the whole five yards, and it's not even associated with the rail station.
No, there's some, there's some challenges here for us.
My planning board acumen's coming up again.
Um, but if, if, oh, go ahead.
No, you.
Um, no, I was just going to say, if, if we do have, um, constraints such as suitability, suitability of land within that half-mile, you can go outside of it. So areas that are farther than half a mile have to be easily accessible to the station based on existing street patterns and pedestrian connections. At least half of the land areas still should be within half-mile of that transit station. So there is some flexibility here. If you still can't do it, then you can locate it in other, other areas within town. But they still need to, um, it still needs to be so easily accessible.
Are you working with other communities, community departments in other communities to have, uh, bigger clout than just a little town in Newbury?
I know West Newbury Planning Board seems to have taken a unified stand against this.
Yes, as has Salisbury, I believe.
And I think Rowley, too, right?
Um, I know Salisbury and West Newbury have, I've seen, you know, I've seen the articles about them. We've had a number of discussions about this at MVPC.
Well, a lot of these communities are, are close to their forty B requirements and everything else, and, you know, they've got a lot of density in some places anyway.
Right, but that may still not meet this requirement, depending on where the density is.
You know, because these could be seven-hundred-thousand-dollar houses.
So, but yeah.
What are our next steps?
So, well, our next steps, um, are, just to go through the requirements again, um, to submit the form, uh, by May second, twenty twenty-two, um, and then submit, uh, proposed action plan or determination of full compliance by December first, um, obtain DHCD approval of a timeline and action plan by July first of next year, and adopt the zoning by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Do you think after they receive comments, there's a chance they may change some of these criteria?
Um, hopefully so.
Yeah, but I know the timeline seems incredibly fast. They're not even giving us a chance to breathe.
Is this a Essex County or a northeast Mass thing, or is it statewide?
Statewide. So I think there are a hundred and seventy-one MBTA communities across the state.
I mean, I took a trip to Springfield with my family a couple of weeks ago, and you get going out there ways, and there's communities that need people. I don't, it, I guess it doesn't make sense to me why they try to cram this in in a place where everything's very expensive, and it's supposed to help people that are, you know, trying to get a leg up in life and the kind of, you know, in an affluent area like this, it's tough. And I drive through a lot of communities, and they need young people, there's empty houses, closed doors, desolate downtowns, and right in our state, it's just, it amazes me when they try to cram it in here where it costs so much to live anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, seems like it's, um, you know, they, they kind of took a bird's eye view, and, um, it's a little bit of a one-size-all approach, which really, I think.
Never works.
Is, is problematic. So, if you go to the next slide, please, and the next one. So, back to the earlier question about the effect of non-compliance. We will not be eligible for the housing choice grants, the local capital fund projects. I'm not sure, that's one I had never even heard of. I think that's revenue from gaming, um, that goes into that one and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. And DHCD may, in its discretion, take non-compliance into consideration when making other discretionary grant awards and indicated the penalties may be more severe in the future.
Yeah, we, we have to keep in mind, too, it says we'll be eligible for the grants for going along with it. It doesn't mean we're necessarily going to get many or any of them.
We haven't yet.
But, uh, next slide, please. And then I just included there, there is a, um, there's a webinar, which, um, I've seen a couple of times now. MVPC hosted one, and there were a few slides, um, sort of trying to, uh, explain why these regulations are necessary, and I'm not going to go through them in any, any great detail, but, um, between nineteen sixty and nineteen ninety, Massachusetts communities permitted almost nine hundred thousand housing units, and since nineteen ninety, it's only been four hundred and seventy new units. So there's an estimated shortage of two hundred thousand housing units, um, in, statewide. And if you go to the next slide, um, we are the orange-ish bar there, um, indicating our rate of housing production compared to some, um, some other states.
Yeah.
And they're seeing it really as an economic development thing. Next slide, please. That, uh, because we don't have the housing, um, we're having a hard time attracting workers, or because our housing is so expensive, we're having a hard time attracting workers. So if there's more housing, there will be, you know, um, you know, more, more opportunity for economic development and being able to support businesses.
Be so well and good if you have the land to do it, but we just don't.
Well, we've got, I mean, we've got the challenges of lack of water and sewer infrastructure, and certainly, I think, challenges in terms of just our, we've got poor soils for septic, we've got a lot of wetlands, we've got a lot of area in the town in, in the ACEC, and, um, so it's, it's, it's a challenge for us, and we'll have to look at it very carefully. So, um, uh, the last sheet, actually, um, I can give this, I can send this to Julie to distribute if you'd like it, um, both the website, um, for the Mass MBTA communities, and also the webinar, if you're at all interested in seeing it.
Yeah, can you send that around to the board?
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely, we'll do. So we'll do that tomorrow. So if you have any questions, any comments, anything, please send them to, to me.
Did your slides show on, on, on the web?
Um, I can put it up.
Yeah, just as I, it's, it's sometimes, I can't read, you know, all the things that would be helpful, questions.
And they're very dense also.
Yeah.
So, um, shall I send it to Julie to distribute?
Yeah.
Do it that way, okay.
Thank you, Martha. All right, you're welcome.
Very nicely done, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. So next, we have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to review and vote to execute the annual town meeting warrant.
Welcome, Finance Committee.
This is the Finance Committee, I don't know, do you guys want to stay where you are, or do you want to come up here? What is it, what you're comfortable doing?
I'm sitting here.
Okay.
Speaker's meeting, too.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start with just a brief, um, budget presentation, hopefully the technology works.
Oh, white, get the white flag.
Little chair.
Jog down.
Nope.
On me?
Mm-hmm. Operator error.
We might want to stress that it's, it's, it's not a train.
Thank you.
Back where it used to be, because the last two years it was at train.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Okay, so with any, um, each year as we start budget development, we, we look at goals and priorities that have been established over the years, and most of ours remain relatively consistent. We, um, want to protect and improve the town's overall financial condition, develop a budget that's in conformance with our comprehensive financial policies. They've certainly served us well to date. Make Newbury, or keep Newbury as an affordable place to live and operate a business, and over the last few years, five or six years, we've been addressing capital facility issues at a very, very rapid clip, including, um, but we've, we've still got more to go, including the town hall, the senior center, and Newbury Elementary School, as well as some identified repairs to the library that will be forthcoming. We want to fund our OPEB liability. We, we talk about that a lot every year. Um, we put it front and center on our warrant, so it stays in people's minds, and they're, they're aware of it. Right now, it stands at, um, a little over six-point-five million, and we've only got seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars funded to date, but we do have an article on the town meeting warrant for, um, another two hundred thousand for this year. We want to establish a stabilization program that funds our annual asset replacements. That program, um, is in place. We're update, we're currently involved in updating our, our long-term capital plan, uh, but we, we're not at the point now where we can fund all of our capital asset replacements just with the stabilization. We supplement with free cash as well. And always, we're, we're, you know, trying to promote a culture of continuous improvement in this town. We want to enhance our communications with residents, whether that's through, you know, websites, social media. We've, we've got a team working on trying to, um, promote that continuously. The total budget summary is a little over twenty-two million dollars. It's an increase of eight hundred and ninety-two thousand over last year, a four-point-one percent increase, again, operating budget increase. Significant changes this year are relative, primarily relative to human services, culture and recreation, and benefits. Those are our three, um, highest percentage cost center increases. So revenues, we've talked about this before, I'm sure most of you are aware of it. We rely very significantly on our property taxes. Um, new growth is also slowing, unless we have, you know, um, significant subdivision growth on the horizon, which we don't, um, unless that goes through. We really don't see a, a large change from one year to the next. Limited, um, new revenue sources, we talk about solar initiatives, parking proposals. They'll bring in some revenue, but nothing significant from one year to the next. On the expenditure side, you know, we're concerned this year, obviously with rising utility and gas costs. Retirement assessment is up quite significantly this year, a little over nine percent. Health insurance costs are projected up over four percent this year. We, we used to have pretty significant increases, you know, double-digit health insurance increases for a period of time. We implemented some plan design changes. Our unions were wonderful to negotiate with, very flexible in allowing us to move forward with those changes. So we, we really had a couple of years of very limited, um, premium increases, but it's starting to trend upward again. Uh, addressing the unfunded liabilities, as we mentioned, uh, police and fire contracts are settled, and we are now in the final year, well, twenty-twenty-three will be the final year of our DPW contract. Revenue structure, only three major components, property taxes. We're a community that relies very heavily on that. Seventy-three percent of our budget is funded through property taxes. We don't have, um, a significant commercial base, so, you know, there, there you can see pretty clearly, um, our reliance on, on, uh, residential taxes. Local receipts are about eight percent, and state aid is about four percent. So each year, as we present our budget to, or our, our warrant to town meeting, you'll see a number of articles on there that would ask for, um, would seek funding from free cash, other available funds, our revolving funds. So those supplement our operating budget on an annual basis, and this year it'll be about fifteen percent. Proposition two and a half, everybody's familiar with that. It limits the amount that we can raise from one year to the next. Plus, we, on top of that, we can also add new construction. This year, it's only about four hundred and fifty-five thousand. New growth's projected at about a hundred and ninety thousand, so you can see, we don't, from one year to the next, we don't have a significant amount of, um, of growth available. So we try to be relatively conservative in our estimates, live within our budget. We, we, unless we know a budgetary increase is going to be sustainable, we don't support it. Local receipts, um, they don't fluctuate too much from one year to the next, um, but it is a receipt, it is a revenue source that it can be influenced by outside economic factors. So you can see in twenty-twenty-two, um, during COVID, people weren't buying new cars. Things like that will influence, they're not putting additions on their homes. That's, those are the economic factors that you could see in local receipts. State aid, twenty-twenty-three, we're still nowhere near where we were in, you know, two thousand and five. We're, we're always being promised that we'll see those increases, that the state's going to partner with us, but we're not quite there yet. Again, that's, there you can see the reliance on our available funds to support our budget. That's just another chart showing that. Expenditures, about, the total operating budget is a little over twenty-two million. Again, four-point-one percent over last year. You can see where the, the cost factors are and the percentage increases in each. Same thing there. General fund budget, you can see each of our functions of government, well, maybe you can't on that, but in the document you can see it. You know, education remains a very high priority for us here in Newbury, as it should be. You could see that reflected there. Sometimes I think it's, um, helpful to see where we've been as you're analyzing where we are. We've seen some changes in our operating budget over almost twenty years. Slight increases in education funding, our debt service, we're retiring it now, benefits are going up, municipal, um, operations, the expenditures there have increased slightly. And in terms of the municipal department budgets, um, line by line, we've seen, um, the salary and wages this year, the proposal calls for a three percent, um, wage increase. There's some minor increases in software licensing fees. We have three elections this year, so that line item is going up. Our tree warden expenses are decreasing with the purchase of the bucket truck. We've been able to do a lot of the work ourself, so that saved us some money. Um, there was a wage adjustment for the shellfish constable position. We've proposed a new, or I've proposed a new assistant town planner position. Town hall lease is up three percent, and our property casualty and liability insurances are estimated, that's one of the, um, items in the budget that is not, has not been finalized yet, but it's estimated at a five percent increase. Public safety, the collective bargaining agreement calls for a two percent wage increase. Public safety, the collective bargaining agreement calls for a 2% wage increase, and there was a negotiated tuition reimbursement. That's a $5,000 increase there. Fire department, new CBA has a 3% wage increase, and we, call fire wages are increasing from $19.24 to $21 an hour. There was a lot of comparative data presented in support of that, and we were indeed very low. The Triton assessment is up 4.6%. Whittier is down, as is Essex Tech. Triton is, I, I think everyone's familiar with their two-step method of apportioning costs. With Whittier and Essex Tech, they have a little bit different agreement, and theirs is more directly proportional to the number of students, is what we're seeing the decline this year. DPW's increases in salary and wages are 3% this year. There are currently eight full-time employees in the department, down from a high of about 13, somewhere around 2010, I believe. Expenses are increasing by about 10 grand. I, I can't talk about the DPW without talking about the road improvement program and the, the crack sailing that they've been doing. I, I think Newbury's roads are quite enviable. I notice a lot more bike riders around. They've done an amazing job. When I, when I first came here, I had suggested, you know, a very large debt exclusion override to fix all the roads at one time, and in, in conversation with James Surratt, the DPW director, he said, no, let's just do it a little bit at a time. We'll, we'll maximize, you know, the funding we received from Chapter 90, and I think it was Selectman Bear that had supported a road improvement override for about 250,000. And with that amount, you know, in, in these years, we've completed, I believe they're up to 87% of all the roadways. So it's, it's been very, very successful. Snow and ice is, remains at 200,000 annually. We now have a full-time director of public health. That was something that was implemented actually last year, but this is the first year. We'll be funding it fully on our budget. They are also adding a hazardous waste collection day in their operating budget. Council on Aging, we've, the select board has given them a charge to kind of expand their programming, and their budget is one of the, is the highest percentage increasing operating budget in the presentation. They're adding staff, a new facility, and a significant number of new programs. So our seniors can accept, can expect to see, see the results of this during fiscal year 2023. Our veterans assessment is decreasing slightly. They've made some changes to staffing, but the benefits remain the same for our veterans. Library is another center that's going to see some new personnel, should this be funded. They'll have a new full-time library associate, and they're going to be working on expanding hours as well. And we have, they call it a MAR. It's a, I, I don't even know what, it's a minimum appropriation. I don't know what the R stands for, but you're supposed to provide in order for you to be eligible to receive grant funding from the state. We've never been able to meet that. We've requested waivers, I think, for about 18 years. So this is, this will get us closer to that, but we still won't be there. And then the cons, the historical commission is going to be adding secretarial position to take minutes at their meetings. Debt service is only up slightly, although our, our actual debt service is declining. In the event that we should be issuing any short-term debt in fiscal year 2023, we will have issuance costs. So I did put some money in there for that in relation to the town hall project. And one thing that's, that's really important to note, most of, most of our debt is all debt exclusion overrides. So when we retire them, we also retire the revenue side. So it's kind of a neutral budget, it has a neutral impact on the budget. So we don't gain any levy capacity. It's not like we retire that, and then we have all this extra money that we can parse out to the other departments. Essex Regional Retirement, we talked about how that's increasing. Group insurance. So basically, in, in summary, just for the operating budget, it, it, you know, what you've got in your document, addresses our priorities, and human services and culture and recreation are the, the highest increases. We've got proposals for facility roadway equipment repairs. Naturally, I, I don't think we can talk about this budget without talking about the success of the public safety building, the public police station. I have been doing this for almost 30 years now, and I've never seen a municipal project come in on time and under budget. It's really quite an amazing feat that you can all be very proud of. And the fire station had a significant amount of repairs there as well, but we've still got, you know, on the horizon, our town hall of permanent home for our senior center. Elementary school, we're, we're working on the roof replacement. We're doing a little bit each year. We've also been notified that the HVA system will need to be replaced at the round school. Library roof needs to be on our capital plan, and various other replacements. And we are also going to be embarking upon a significant road resurfacing project on Plum Island, along with continuation of the Orchard Street culvert replacement. We're moving on that one, and Central Street culvert. And that, let's see if I can get that to start. So we've done a lot over the past few years to address what is pretty much the results of many, many years of deferred maintenance, but we, we clearly have a lot to do. So it's important, as ever, to adhere to all of our financial management policies that were adopted by the select board back in, I think, 2017. They've certainly served as the foundation of all of our financial planning. I know at the finance committee level, we talk about it all the time. And as you can see, it's allowed us to deliver measurable results in what's been accomplished. So thanks, everybody, for all your assistance and advice and guidance as we work through the budget process. It's very much appreciated.
You're skilled, and thanks for bringing that to our town.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you, Madam Chair, do you want to go through the warrant and take your votes, so we can get those for the booklet?
Yes. So I'm going to just go through the warrant, and we're going to vote. If you have any questions, you can raise your hand and get my attention. The first thing I do want to make note of, as Selectwoman Heavy suggested, and I think it's a good, it's a good one, this year's annual town meeting is going to be back at Newbury Elementary School in the cafeteria at 63 Hanover Street. The past two years, it's been at Triton because of COVID, but this year, we're going back to NES.
Did you say the cafeteria?
Yes.
Oh, it says cafeteria. But it's the gym.
Good catch.
Yeah. It's a gym.
We had it one year in the cap, yeah. It's going to be in the gym.
I was just going to say, holy mackerel. One year we had it. Caught that look, Haji.
They put temporary tables for the kids to eat in the gym.
Yeah, so it's a whole different room. It is going to be on the 26th day of April at 7:00 PM. So Article One, to meet our respective voting districts on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, the polls will be open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM to vote on the following offices. You guys can read them all here in front of you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Tracy, second, are we looking for a motion to approve, or a motion to submit, or a motion to?
Motion to approve is fine.
It's fine, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. To receive the report, Article Two is to receive the reports of the select board, school committee, regular and special committees, and all other town officers, but to take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Three, to see if the town will fix the salaries and compensation of certain elected officers if the town is follows. And then you can see them, they're all here in front of us. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Oops, sorry. Motion to approve, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just as a point of business clarification for tonight, the, the finance committee may ask questions or participate in discussion with you all, but we will not be making our votes for recommending, which we typically do. Those votes will be taken at the April 4th meeting, as we typically do when we work to prepare the budget. We're above our booklet with rationales and those votes. So we can ask questions, but we won't be voting to recommend or anything tonight.
April 5th.
April 5th, Tuesday, April 5th.
That's timely, right?
Yep, that'll work well. So if you guys on the finance committee have any questions of me, just make sure I see you. Thank you. Okay, we have three citizens petitions that were submitted to the town for placement on the, the town warrant. So Article Four is to see if the town will vote to transfer or appropriate the sum of $20,000, or any other sum from the free cash fund to fund the purchase and installation of a public safety gate at the Georgetown Larkin Road Bridge, or take any other action in relation thereto. It was submitted by Justin Larnigan of 38 Larkin Road.
But it's a motion to accept.
I don't think we have to vote on certain petitions.
We're not going to do that.
Because they're on there anyway.
Yeah, do we want to say, do we want to?
They're on, they're on there automatically when they have the requisite signatures, but you generally do take a vote and include it in the booklet as to whether or not you're in favor, or will of the town, or?
So this one, I, I, I was thinking that this would be a will of the town, but I don't know.
Well, let's, let's, let's start with, I move to?
No, we already have a motion and a second.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Would we do, Julie, correct?
No, I didn't catch.
No.
Okay.
I made a motion.
So I think Mike moved it.
Yeah.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, now we have discussion. So I think there is some question in the legality of this, that the town council is continuing to look at. So, but I think that this should be the will of the town, personally made. I don't know what anybody else feels.
I'm personally in favor of it.
My town meeting vote on it's fine by me.
Yeah. Jerry, Jeff, feel the same way?
I think, I think if, if we have to go to this because traffic is such that it cannot be controlled for any reason whatsoever, then this seemingly is a little early, but it's fine.
I guess my feeling is will of the town would be my vote.
Yeah, that's how I feel, too. So all in favor of, for the, for the, recommends, the select board recommendation to be will of the town? All in favor?
Clarification. Will of the town, what's the alternative?
There is no alternative.
Okay, so we're just?
If town meeting approves it, it goes.
Right, okay, so, so it's not like you, you're pending by will of the people?
Oh, no, no, no. So what this is, let me explain, because I don't?
No, 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 I, I understand now, but?
Below the rationale, what it'll say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll say what?
The select board voted will of the town. That's what it's going to say, if we vote that way. If you vote no, then it'll be three votes for the will of the town, two votes against the will of the town. The other previous ones are going to be all, the select board will say five yeses, or if it's five yeses, two, two noes. It's, it's our, our votes. So when town meeting shows, our town, town meeting members come to town meeting, they'll see, the finance committee's going to take their votes at their next meeting, but it's town select board approval and finance committee approval. So people know what their elected boards?
So what you're saying is that the select board, then by saying will, will of the people, you're saying that the select board didn't favor it by putting, putting that language?
What I'm saying is that the select board, this is, this is a town warrant, this is a warrant on the article of town meeting. What I'm saying is that what town meeting decides is the will of the town. What the town decides, if the town decides to raise and appropriate the money for 20, and do, do this?
So why shouldn't?
But are we signaling that we don't approve of it?
Oh, I don't think so.
You can vote, yes?
You can vote.
Why don't we just?
Why don't we just treat it like we do the, the other ones?
The other ones are going to be same thing, yes or no. Why don't we just say will of the town for all citizens' petitions?
Well, you can if you want, but we need to vote them individually.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can't vote the whole, all articles at one time.
I'm just talking about the three petitions.
I guess, so I'm going to entertain a motion that this?
You have a hand, though.
Simply means you don't take a petition.
It can mean that you're?
Which is what I was asking, right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
You don't say yes or?
Right. So that's kind of where I sit with this. I don't want to say yes or no. I think it should be the will of the, the town. So I'm going to entertain a motion that the select board vote, vote will of the town for our recommendation.
So we'll vote individually. You need an all those in favor, and my vote is will of the town.
Yeah, my vote is will of the town.
Can we second your motion or anything?
Yes.
Yeah, we second it, yeah.
All right, well, will of the town is fine for me.
I, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's, I just, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, this is the citizens' petition. It's the, you know, it's the freest form of democracy. These people have, have waited long enough. Back in September, they talked about doing these gates. We haven't addressed this issue, and they've had to, they've had to go this route. I, I'm, I'm in favor for it.
So you want to vote, so you're not in favor of will of the town?
No, I, I, no, because that, that labels it that we don't approve, and I, I want to approve this, so?
But when, but when you're at town meeting floor, you vote, you vote yes?
Okay, but this is waving a red flag that we don't vote, we don't, we don't endorse it.
The select, the select board votes on these, all the articles individually.
Hold on, Frank.
So correct me if I'm wrong, don't Articles Four, Five, and Six go to town meeting no matter what?
Yes, yes, so why label it? Why label?
Traditionally, in the past, we have before.
In, in the past, we've done will of the town.
So they go, they go to town meeting no matter what?
Correct.
And the only thing that you'd be doing is putting a thumbs up or a thumbs down as to your opinion by voting?
Correct.
Or keeping your thumb in your fist.
Right. Article Four, my vote is will of the town.
Wait a minute, Frank, what do you mean, voting where? At town meeting or voting here?
The votes that you're taking right now, whether you call it will of the town, whether you say approve, whatever, none of it is of any consequence, right? It's going to town meeting no matter what.
Correct.
But that's not accurate. It isn't consequences, because it's waving a red flag that you're either for it or against it, as you said earlier.
That's our job.
That's, that's the select.
But if you, but regardless, if you all said, if you voted whatever the appropriate vote would be, that we're against it, it's still going to town meeting.
Correct.
Right, correct.
And the only thing that you'd be voicing is your?
Approval or your endorsement of it. This looks like it's an endorsement or not an endorsement. That's my issue.
See, when we, when we vote, we vote whether or not we recommend, we vote on a recommendation. So then we carefully choose our words of, because we're not voting on, we, we write a recommendation, and our vote of that recommendation, and our rationale. And we don't all agree.
Right.
So on anything that has money items, items that do not involve money, we don't comment on. But these are, yeah.
These all have money associated to them.
These all have money associated, so I'm assuming that we will, they will go on the warrant. We don't say whether or not to, they'll go on the warrant, because that's not our job. It's just whether or not we, as financialized ERS, would vote to recommend or not. And we do that in a?
And the majority of the?
And the majority of the vote is what goes on?
It actually will say recommend, it would say, you know, if it, if we're seven and zero, to recommend, yes, we recommend this because we believe it's in the best interest, if we are split at four and three, it'll also say we're split four and three.
So we need to move to a vote here.
So I, I guess, um, I still feel this needs to be will of the town.
Right, but that would be your vote.
That's my vote.
Yeah. So, start at one end of the table with the vote, we can all weigh in and we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, so.
What are, what are our options? Do we have will of the people, recommend or not recommend? I'll vote for or against the will of the people, what are our options?
Yes, no, will of the town. Or you could abstain theoretically, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll go last, Jerry?
I vote yes, in favor.
Okay, so that's, that's yes?
Will of the people.
Will of the people, mine's will of the town.
Will of the town.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. You got those recorded, Julie?
Yes.
Okay. So next is Article five, to see if the town will vote to limit the fiscal year 2023 operating budget to a maximum increase of 2.0 from the fiscal year 2022 operating budget. And this was submitted by Jim Moran, 104 Elm Street.
Motion to vote.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I'm going to ask the Finance Committee to weigh in on this.
I think that I owe it to Tracy on this, but also for confirmation, a 2%, we just learned a budget presentation of 4.1%. What, what on your initial back of the envelope calculations would a 2%? I mean, I, I'm assuming that if we could have done a budget with a 2% increase, you would have written a budget.
Yeah.
Balanced a 2% increase, we wouldn't have.
Yeah, I, I haven't had an opportunity to craft an alternative budget document, but it would have some, I mean, all of the, the new initiatives naturally would be removed, there would be adjustment to the wage increase for the employees, and the larger cost centers of our operating budget would be impacted. Generally speaking, if I go back to the town of Newbury, I think 2009, 2010, before I, I came, and it is, you know, government finance officers recommended, it's not because we don't like cultural programming or those types of things, but generally speaking, your libraries get hit the hardest, your, your non-essential, I don't deem them that, that's what they're called in our financial world, the non-essential budgets get hit the hardest.
So the school budget would not get hit, because that's an assessment.
Contractual not change either.
Contractual will not change, no.
What are the hard figures that we're talking about? What's the difference between 4.1 and 2%?
Uh, probably 480,000, somewhere around there.
480.
Somewhere around there.
Is it, is it safe to say that with contractual obligations and assessments, 3%, please, 4, whatever the numbers were, that that would make up the lion's share, if not more, of a 2% budgetary increase?
Pretty much, close, it would be close.
What you're saying is anything other than contractual obligation than assessment would essentially be jettisoned from the budget?
It would be on the chopping block, yeah.
I mean ballpark, looking at this and looking at the history, this is irresponsible. On its own.
We've been there, yeah.
Yes, yeah, that's absolutely, we don't sit to, we, we aim for level services and improvements in keeping with our goals and the financial principles that the Board of Selectmen voted on. The fundamental principles of our budgeting are based on something that we codified a number of years ago.
2017, we have the financial policies that we put into place to, to prevent these types of mistakes from happening in our budgeting process.
And you're really talking too about capital planning.
Well, that's, I'm not, that's.
I, I come from that era, and Gene, you were around then too, when we couldn't maintain things.
Yeah, well, no, this isn't operating budget, this is operating.
This is operating, but that's still, we.
It impacts ultimately.
Yeah, the Capital Planning Commission and the, all of the, the constraints and rigors that we put around this process over the last 11 years are substantial, and they were done because we were in financial duress. 11 years ago tonight, the Board of Selectmen considered the application for town administrator. That vote was taken 11 years ago tonight, also, that night, there was an override amount for $950,000.
I remember that.
It didn't pass. It was because we were in a structural deficit, because we had used one-time funds, and we had followed some really bad budgeting principles. And that has changed dramatically, something like Article five would be setting us back.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, no.
I vote no?
No.
Mike?
Will of the people.
Okay, Article six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $1 million from free cash fiscal year 2023 to the total operating budget, submitted again by Jim Moran, 104 Elm, Elm Street. Entertain a motion?
Motion to vote, second.
Discussion. Okay, this is in direct contradiction of our fiscal policies, we don't take free cash and use the operating budget towards our operating budget, because eventually you'll end up again in a structural deficit. It's all for the same reasons, it's just poor financial planning, it's short-sighted, it's going to set the town up for shutting the street lights off again, layoffs, and everything else that we had to go through before, so. Question?
Yes, um, the, um, free cash, it's about a million and a half dollars? Is it not?
Over $4 million.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Does the Finance Committee want to comment?
It's fiscally irresponsible.
It's fiscally irresponsible? It is.
We can vote.
Okay. Jerry?
Yes.
Alicia, no?
No.
Mike?
Will of the people.
Okay. So next we have Article seven, which is the appropriation, so to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer of available funds or otherwise provide the salaries and wages of town officers as listed here for a total budget of $22,448,388.
Motion to vote, second.
Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000, this is Article eight, or any other sum to be added to the stabilization fund, or to take any of the action in relation thereto.
Motion to vote, second.
Jerry?
Yes.
Can we, can we discuss for just a second?
Yeah.
So how much is in stabilization now?
Currently, we have $551,460.48, and we're proposing spending a little over $400,000.
Okay, okay.
And we're going to move any back into it?
We're going to raise and appropriate $125,000.
That's what I just read, sorry. It's still on the uptake, sorry, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $200,000 or any other sum to fund the other post-employment benefits, or take any of the action in relation thereto.
Motion to vote, second.
Any comments, questions, discussions?
I know, um, this isn't unique to Newbury and many other communities in Massachusetts, you know, are in the same position we are. It's something we need to keep in mind, and it, it's a large sum, but, you know, we also need to realize that the sky isn't falling, we've been taking the right steps to, you know, start coming along funding this, so.
Slowly.
That's all.
Pick it off. Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alicia, yes. Okay, to see if the town will vote to transfer or appropriate the sum of $95,050 or any other sum from the receipts reserved cable, television, PEG access, special revenue fund for the support of PEG access service and programming. Can I have a motion?
Motion to vote, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alicia, yes?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
You get that one out?
11, Article 11, to see if the town will vote to authorize the total expenditures for the following revolving funds pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one half for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to be expended in accordance with the bylaws here to approve. The Recreation Revolving Fund, spending limit of $50,000, and a Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund, a spending limit of $55,000. Take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to vote, second.
Any questions? Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
JR?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Alicia's yes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the following sums or any other sums to operate the ambulance enterprise. It's all listed, uh, listed here in front of you, and further, that $288,318 be raised as follows as departmental receipts.
Motion to vote, second.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
JR?
Just quickly, I want to let everyone know the ambulance enterprise has been a success, this thing pays for itself.
Every year.
This has been a good thing for us, and I vote yes.
Yes.
Alicia votes yes. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $40,000 or any other sum to purchase a cardiac monitor, or take any other relation thereto.
Second.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
JR?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alicia, yes. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $52, $552 to pay the following outstanding bill from fiscal year 2021, security team, $552.
Motion to vote, second.
I have discussion on it. Is this, is this supposed to go on a special election, Tracy?
We don't have to have a special town meeting anymore, you can combine it all into one single warrant, that was changed, um.
Couple of years ago?
Two years ago.
That's nice.
Right.
Question? Yes.
What, what does this cover, security, it's not police?
No, it's our, our, um.
Alarm.
Alarm?
Our alarm systems, yeah, yeah, our alarm systems, but what happened was the, we didn't receive the bill, and because it crosses fiscal years, we have to put it on the warrant, it has to receive a nine, 10 vote.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
JR?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alicia's yes. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $45,000 or any other sum to construct a police department archive squad room, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to vote, second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Just, is this work that was never completed on the new, um, police station? I know last time, or recently, we accepted $20,000 worth of, um, labor, and I believe it was for the archive room by Mr. Connors, so.
This was, this is what Bob built, right? This is some of this, you want to retrofit some of the space?
This is a retrofit, um, the police department came to us and said they needed, want a retrofit for, yeah, this was the retrofit for the police station, and I believe it's for a, uh, what they call the squad room, and a lockable archive room. I don't know if it's just archives, or whether it's archives and, um, evidence, and unfortunately, she has to.
No, he's right behind you.
Okay, gee, why don't you do it? I was wondering, I couldn't tell who you were looking at, I was in line here.
Yeah, what this is, is the, um, the finishing off of the attic space upstairs. We have to have an archive room for the, our records, they have to be lockable and trackable, and that's for the integrity of the archive records, and certain things that you can't get rid of, you have to keep forever. So, um, that, that's part of it, and the other part is the squad room, it's a layover room, basically, that, um, Mr. Connors was gracious enough to take care of the lion's share of that. The, um, the part that's left is the finishing it off, the electrical, the lighting, and HVAC relocation, you know, just stuff like that. And so that was the number that we're looking at, hopefully it'll be less, but.
So this should complete that project?
Yes.
Thank you.
Why wasn't it completed before?
It wasn't part of the plans before, it was, it's an open attic that we're utilizing as efficient space.
And it probably would have cost five times as much.
I don't want to say that a lot, you say that. Okay, you're welcome.
Yankee Engineering is still alive in Newbury, okay, so Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
JR?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alicia, yes. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $22,000 or any other sum to purchase solar-powered speed crosswalk signs, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to vote, second.
Discussion.
These going, there was this discussion that one might go to the schools, and one was going to Plum Island.
Do you have any plan for this, um, chief?
John?
Chief?
Chief.
Lucy?
Two Johns.
I'm getting it.
Do you have any plan for this crosswalk, where you're going to put the crosswalks, or?
The signs.
Crosswalking speed. Okay, we'll do them all at once here, so. The crosswalks, what I'm proposing is to give a little bit of extra safety at Plum Island Center.
Yeah.
Lot of pedestrian traffic through there, um, and anything that slows people down, brings people's attention to, you know, pedestrians trying to cross.
These are portable or permanent?
They're permanent, and they're solar-powered, you know, they, they activate, I don't know all the technical stuff, but they activate when somebody walks up to it and hits the button, it'll flash. And also really delineates that's where the crosswalks are, with the sand and such, it kind of obscures the, the actual paint. So, uh, the locations I was proposing was, um, crossing at Plum Island Boulevard, so two sides there, and the crossing at Northern Boulevard would be the suggestions, and also one at Newbury Elementary, crossing there.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So that's the crosswalks, and we're going to talk about radar boards now? Did I go walk back and come back?
Come back, it's good exercise, John.
Yeah, it is, actually.
No, get ahead, you're here now.
Would you all like me to talk, I didn't know if that's what you wanted me to do, did you want to? So, yeah, the radar boards, they, they serve a couple of purposes, it's traffic calming is, is one, and also can generate data to see if, you know, where the problem areas are. What I'm proposing on this is deployment at Byfield Center, um, and also coming in from Georgetown, right on, um, where Jackman, yeah, comes to Elm Street there, that, right at the line there, we're having a lot of concerns, I personally go out there watching and running radar, and have a, have a specialized patrol there just to monitor what we have, and there's an, there's a, there's an issue there, so we want to make sure.
Give me if I already stated it, then those are portable or permanent?
Those are, those will be pole-mounted, but they could, they'll be solar-powered, so they can be moved, you know, so.
One of the things, I've had more calls than three years from Ross Lane people during the summer. They say that people just go over that hill and, so is there any way that, during the summer, we could, it could, one could be put there, portable?
It's, it's possible, actually, in the summer, that's a good point, you know, that's a, that's a hotspot there. We're there a lot, we're there quite a bit, you know, um, hopefully we're making an impression, but every little bit helps.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second, Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
JR?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alicia, yes. Okay, Article 17, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $100,000 or any other sum to make repairs to the Newbury Elementary School roof.
Motion to vote, second.
Any discussion?
Just quick, why is it done, so I noticed in the neck, in the budget, the next five years, it's 100,000, 100,000, 100,000.
We're doing it in pieces, because it was going to be almost a million bucks.
Right, but all I'm saying is, if we got some of this aqua money, okay, it's like, it's. it's in stat, maybe clearing this off the books quicker than a hundred thousand every month, every year.
Well, this is a plan that we're.
It's just a thought.
Yep, but this is a plan, that we're going to stick to this plan, so that, because the APPA money is different criteria around that.
They could be using a school, if it could be using a bathroom.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, but it's different spending, you can't, there's different spendings for that. Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
JR? And Mike?
Yes.
Alicia is yes. Okay, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars or any other sum to purchase a dump truck or act in relation there, too.
Motion to vote, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I reached out to a friend of mine who's neck-deep in these types of things for a living, not in the sales end, but in the user end, in today, a fully equipped truck like we would need with the sander and a plow. He said that's, he said it's hard to believe, but the day and age we're in, that's in line. That's, the price is in line.
More than a million dollars?
I mean, tractor trailers, you know, equipment of that caliber, that's where we're at. I mean, big farm tractors are going for over two-hundred thousand now.
And I read this as if we happen to get a better deal, it goes back anyway, right? Yep, so.
It's an up-to number.
Yep, yep.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
JR? Mike?
Yes.
Alicia's yes. And Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of two-point-five million dollars to the town hall project account or act in relation there, too.
Motion to vote, second.
Inquiry?
Yes.
Historically, wasn't this last year a warrant as well that was voted, was it two?
We had one point, we had one point five.
One point five, so this is more.
So what happens with this is that this is just being appropriated out of free, out of free cash? So what, what this seeks to do is to encumber that two-point-five million into the town hall account, so that when we move forward with the town hall project, it'll be less of a financial impact in the form of a debt exclusion override to the residents.
I understand completely.
Yeah, so that's why this is appropriated like this.
Tracy?
Yes.
This is one of those times where moving money from free cash into a one-time expense, to very make it clear for the public, not just for the board, but this is something where moving money from free cash to a one-time expense like a capital project such as the Town Hall Initiative or other capital project is in line with our financial practices. It's very different from moving money from free cash into an operating budget. This is one that will actually help the towns, townspeople and taxpayers, is that we are, by putting money away that we have, that's already been raised, appropriated and set aside, it means that if we are building something, we do not have to go out for the full amount of the project, we have set money aside for that.
So what's the amount? Is there a current? Is there, how much is in the current amount? Is there any money?
In the account of that?
If this, if this article passes, what would it, oh, sorry, Mike, we'll answer you. How much is it now?
I thought I was helping, but I wasn't.
Yeah, if, right now, we have a little over one-point-two million. This will bring us up over three-point-seven, close to four million dollars, so.
I think, as a town, we should all be very proud that through town meeting, you know, the, the smarts and willingness of our people to vote for these things, that in the hard work of people in this building, that we've been able to save essentially that kind of money to put towards the town hall. That is totally unheard of.
And the other thing I do want to say, too, is we have been, have the privilege of having some APPA money to do, to be able to purchase capital expenditures that otherwise wouldn't have to come out of free cash. So by the town utilizing that APPA money and buying cruisers, police cruisers, fire cruisers, that doesn't encumber this savings account from us. So we are able to shift where APPA money wouldn't be, you know, we're going to go out to bid, and we won't get, we're not looking at a five-year plan before we get a town hall completed, or at least five years, a hundred percent completed. APPA money can't be spent for that. So this is, this is another way of being able to save taxpayer money and save it and spend it on a town meeting, so.
Alicia, I think also, it makes something like a town hall built responsibly something we can do, because as time goes by, you know, borrowing money is going to become more and more expensive if trends service right, so it would be nice to maybe seriously think about this. We prepared for it, we put money aside.
And actually, Jeff, you just made me think of a good point, and I guess Marshall and Gene and Eric, I'd like, you know, the finance committee's thought on this. If Article two, if we use free cash to plug an operating account, our, our operating budget, what would that do for our, would we take a hit on our triple-A bond rating? Because that's not financially sound.
Credit, you know, the people that rate our credit don't look positively at using one-time funded, funded sources based. That's a sign of poor management.
That's a sign of, yeah, it's a sign of a weak town. Okay, thank you.
And we've had plenty of those signs in the past.
And we weren't credit rated very well.
And so we have paid the piper for that in the past. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, which did come up last year, was the fact that it's in something called the Town Hall Project Account, does not earmark it for the Town Hall Project. It just earmarks it for capital expenses that the town decides to do and puts before the voters to vote on, so.
This doesn't even, it's going for Town Hall, then?
No.
No, it does not.
It would require, this isn't the final vote, this is, this is to put it in our savings account, but we would have to go to town meeting for the project, and to get the project approved, you would say, I, I don't know the exact legal language, but it would say to, to.
Utilize this.
Yeah, to utilize, it would, it would have a borrowing amount, which would be the difference between what it'll cost and what we have saved, and to appropriate from the Town Hall Project Account those funds that we have saved, so there's, there's another vote before we can move forward.
Yeah, I mean, you could call this the capital savings account, just anything you want. It's the same thing. It's money held for capital expenses, whatever the town decides those capital expenses are going to go toward.
The intent at this point is this.
Is for the town.
Yeah.
The town hall can, the town meeting can do.
Okay, any other questions? Jerry?
Will of the people.
Yes.
Yes? Alicia, yes?
Yes.
Mike?
I'm will of the people this one, too.
Okay. And then we have bylaws, Article twenty and Article twenty-one.
What's to read them?
We don't, we don't normally, that's will of the people for us, too, as well. Martha, do you want to explain a little bit about?
I think Wendy Allen should read it.
No.
Martha's voice is bad.
There's a lot there.
There's a lot there, really.
Martha, do you want to clock it up?
I've got a bunch, too.
Alicia, the first one is the regional school district. Article twenty.
Yeah. Who wants?
Article twenty.
Okay, actually, Martha, yeah, I'm going to jump ahead of you for one second. Article twenty is to see if the town of Newbury will vote to approve the Triton Regional School District's committee vote on March ninth to establish a stabilization fund pursuant to section sixteen G, one-half of chapter seventy-one of the Massachusetts General Laws, said stabilization fund to be invested and to retain its own interest earnings as provided by law, and further set up as an operational line item to be created to transfer available monies into said stabilization fund or take any other action relative there, too. So because the district exists to support the three towns, they need a vote of town meeting to have a stabilization fund, which is sound financial management, and I can ask the town, the finance committee.
Yeah, as of right now, there's no money in their budget being, they need to establish the fund, they wouldn't actually put any money into the fund until next year. So this is just, all three towns have to approve this to have a fund. It's part of a longer term, much like we did here, and some financial strategies to show financial solvency for projects, bond ratings, things like that, and the OPEB calculations actually have some implications, so having this, this stabilization fund is actually steps in the right direction across all of that, and there's, if you want to hear more conversations, all of the DCC meetings over the last year spoke into this.
Yeah, Jerry?
This, what is the anticipated use of this stabilization fund to pay what kind of bills other than your OPEB?
It's, it's not, they're going to just be looking kind of like we fund our stabilization is to then be there for there also, because the district itself has capital needs as well. So there's different there, but there's no, right now, it's just to.
Establish.
Establish a fund. We can't, they're, they can't even appropriate anything to a fund.
Okay.
This is, this is needed, especially as that district looks forward to whatever projects they have coming.
I believe this needs approval of all three towns, so we.
We need to pass it. Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alicia, yes?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, Martha, Article twenty-one now. This is the regulations of overlay districts for wireless communications.
All right. So we did speak about this fairly recently, so it's essentially a, a replacement of our existing wireless communications overlay district language and replacing it with this language. So it's, it's been expanded to clarify the permitting responsibility for, for approval of a special permit is now in the planning board's hands, because there's some overlap with site plan review, so it makes most sense to kind of keep that all under one, one authority. The language regarding eligible facilities requests has been expanded and clarified. It adds language regarding small cell facilities in, outside of rights of way, adds a bunch of definitions that we didn't have at the end, and, you know, basically is intended to, you know, make, make the bylaw compliant with current federal law, and also something which hopefully will make it easier for wireless communications to come into town to address the gaps and covers that we have. So, you know, it doesn't guarantee that, well, that they'll come, but this is certainly a step in that direction.
Okay. Any questions? Of Martha? Finance committee have any questions on Martha?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So I think normally zoning, we, we vote will of the town here, too, so. Yes?
I think we just keep going like we have.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to vote, second.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alicia will be yes.
Will of the town.
Will of the town.
Okay. And. Article twenty-two, see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Newbury, chapter eighty-eight, street sidewalks and commons adopted by new section eighty-eight fifteen, small wireless facilities in rights of way as follows. This is also part of the same bylaw amendment, but it.
I'm going to just make a motion so we can discuss.
Yeah.
Motion to vote, second.
Okay, discussion. So the select board shall adopt from time to time to amend policies, rules and regulations relative to the issuance of special permits. Under this section eighty-eight fifteen, copy of the policy, rules and regulations shall begin filed with the town clerk. Such rules shall prescribe the form, content, style and number of application forms, fees collectible with the applications, the process by which the application will be reviewed, the design and location criteria for approval, the time within, with, which the board is selecting, I should say, select board will issue a decision and requirements for recertification. So Martha, this just, can you explain this?
Yes, so basically, this is, it's kind of a companion piece to the other one. The wireless communications bylaw deals with small cell facilities within, in private property, but if it's in a right of way, it really falls under the purview of the select board. So it's essentially a grant of location for the select board to, to give permission for small cell facilities in our rights of way.
Would this be by special permit?
And it would be, I think that's part of the regulations. This is something that came from town council, so.
Okay. Jerry?
I know the other bylaw was for cell towers. What exactly would a small wireless facility be? AM operator or?
No, so these are, the other bylaw covers cell towers, but also other wireless communications facilities, including, you know.
There are repeaters and things now, I believe.
Well, yeah, and a lot of those, pole-mounted ones would be within the right of way, and that would be under your purview.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martha.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
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 Will of the town.
Yes.
I hate to do this, but so when you're, when you're taking your votes, if the select board wants to vote on something, and the majority of you decide, yes, you want to vote on it, it's in favor, opposed, or abstaining. If you, the majority of you decide that you want it to be will of the town, then in the booklet, it will not have the votes appearing, it will just say will of the town. So we're kind of mixing them up, and I'm not sure how to reflect that properly in the booklet.
I think we need to retake some votes.
Oh, Lord. Why don't we?
For clarity.
Man, I know we've had will of the town.
Yeah.
When you're all in agreement that you want this to just be the will of the town.
Okay, all right, there's a technicality here, then. Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, okay.
I don't know, if you want to take a majority vote on those items, and if the majority says will of the town, then that, that would be reflected, or if you just want to vote and have.
Are we having, are we having our votes like two, three, no, like the finance committee votes? We're not having that, are we?
Yeah, we always do that.
I forget.
You can't have.
So we have.
So you either do.
Three yes, two no.
Yeah, when you would take your vote, it would be four in favor, one opposed, zero abstentions.
You are right.
Could, could you just convert the people that voted will of the town? Could you just convert those to abstentions?
That's what I, if you're amenable to that, I could, I could convert the will of That's what I, if you're amenable to that, I could, I could convert the will of the town to abstentions, or...
Yeah, I, I'm, as far as my votes go, I'm comfortable with that.
Mike?
I'll, I'll will of that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable with that because it's not an abstention.
Would you like to revote them? Yeah, we're gonna have to revote.
Let's revote them all, get over them.
But what about just the ones that have will of the town?
Yeah, yeah, just the ones who have the will of the town.
Because everything else is fine, Tracy, right?
Right. Article four, you had three wanting to be will of the town and two wanting to be yes. Okay, so...
Okay, so...
So, Article four... So, if we, if we revote, the will of the towns will be abstaining.
There won't be.
There'll be an abstention.
Four.
Is that what you're saying?
I just, yes, no.
You can either do that, you can either take the vote, two voted yes, and you three can vote no or abstain, or you can all vote the will of the town and let the Town Meeting decide what to do with it. It's, it's not a negative. Will of the town has never been a negative here before, it's just a...
So, and all we need are three votes to do a will of the town, correct?
Correct.
A majority, a majority vote. Okay, so, I, I guess I move like I did originally. Can you read the motion, Julie? The original motion?
Well, you moved to vote, and then after the discussion, you had three will of the towns and recommendation to will of the towns, and then you had two yeses.
Okay, so...
If I may suggest, wouldn't it be just easier, since these are citizens petitions, to just allow, don't, allow the town people at the Town Meeting to vote and, and just list will of the town?
It's, that's, that's what will of the town does, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, so, for the ease of it.
Yeah, okay.
But you were the one that thought that might not bode well.
Well...
Abstain, she didn't think would do it.
Abstain is even worse.
Abstain's worse, yeah. Will of the town.
Yeah, it's neutral, neutral.
Right, that's right.
Yes, neutral.
Okay.
That's what I want.
Article four, I moved that Article four for the Select Board be will of the town.
I'll, I'll second that.
Jerry?
Yes.
All right, you gonna second that, Mike?
I'll second that.
All right, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alicia is yes. JR?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, what else?
Article five, you had three yeses, one no, and one will of the town.
So, to see if the town will vote to limit the fiscal year 2023 operating, operating budget to a maximum increase of 20%.
We had two percent.
We had three, we had three yeses?
Three in?
Three nos.
I'm sorry, three nos, okay. Three nos, okay.
Bingo.
So, that's gonna be one yes and one abstention.
Okay, so, three nos.
One yes and one will of the people, is what I had.
Who was the will of the people? Mike, do you want abstain?
No, no abstain, so let me...
Okay.
I thought we weren't u, using...
I thought we had to will of the people. Will of the people for all, that's what I was suggesting.
Use will of the people for everything I guess.
For the three, the three...
Then I want to revoke them, I'm not comfortable with that.
I'm not comfortable with that either. This goes against our, all of our financial policies.
We need to revoke them individually. Let's just revoke them individually.
Okay.
So, but then, let me get this straight. There's no will of the people, it's either yes, no, or abstain?
Correct. For these two. The first one, Article four, we already voted will, will of the people. These two...
Why can't the will of the people be in the, in these two also?
Because that's not the way I feel about those two. And it's my vote.
So, I, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion, JR, for Article five?
No. Oh, I'm motion to vote.
Your motion to vote.
Second.
Okay. Jerry?
For Article five?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
No.
No?
No.
Yes.
Okay, Article six?
Did you vote, Alicia?
Is that the same one? Yeah, I voted no.
Motion.
Wait a minute, let's, let Julie catch up. Okay, so Julie, what do we have for Article six?
I voted no.
Yeah, two nos, yes.
So, to see if the town, Article six, entertain a motion.
Motion to vote. Second.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Alicia was no, JR?
No. Yes.
Michael's yes, okay. What else do we have? Any other? Martha's, was Martha's bylaws, do we have to revote those?
Yeah, there were two will of the town on that one.
We have to vote it that way.
The Fin, the Finance Committee does that because there's no money involved, yes. So, just the last two.
Okay, so we have Article... Twenty-one? Twenty-one.
With four in favor.
Twenty-one, yeah, so, all right, so I'll have Article 21, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to vote.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, so, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alicia was yes?
Yes.
Mike?
I'll change my vote to yes.
Okay. And then Article 22?
Tracy, you know, not to make this complicated, everyone is wrong...
We're almost done.
But, I've, I've always gotten confused right here. The Finance Committee can vote to recommend. We're just voting to include these in the warrant or not?
You're voting your recommendations.
We are voting our recommendations.
Yeah, this is the recommendation I need.
All right.
Okay, so Article 22? I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion to vote.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Five yeses.
Sorry, thank you.
No, but thank you because we would have been doing this again in...
That'll happen tomorrow night.
Another meeting, right. My first time as chair doing this, so thank you for your, for your patience. We have additional stuff.
I was gonna say, do you, like, would I entertain a motion for the Finance Committee to adjourn?
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Finance Committee. Thanks for coming in and making this an extra meeting for you.
Frank, that case, I'm sure it's got a couple of years on it.
What's that?
That case, I'm sure it's got a couple of years on it.
It does.
Holding up nice.
What's wrong, we'll just retire. I'll have one last comment.
Take a five minute break, so...
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Now, we have to vote to execute the annual Town Meeting warrant, so I'll entertain a motion to execute the Town, the annual Town Meeting warrant.
Motion to execute. Uh, second.
Okay.
Does that mean we shoot it?
Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Alicia's yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike is yes. Okay. No old business, the Town Administrators report.
Well, I, the only thing I have tonight in addition to the budget is ARPA fund requests. I have three. I have a request from the Newbury Fish Commission for green, the green crab trapping program. The money would be used to subsidize the trapping of green crabs. Trappers will receive 40 cents a pound for trapped crabs. Program to be administered by the Shellfish Warden Paul Thistlewood under the direction of Chief Lucy, and they're requesting $20,000.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Jerry?
Aye.
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 Okay.
We have a request from IT for a server as computer replacement. A refresh of mission critical server resources for Town Government Operations is in order. Server hardware and software must remain current in order to maintain security and reliability. We need to replace aging, unsupportable systems with current hardware and operating systems. Older systems increase the likelihood of lost work as a result of physical failure, and that is for $32,000.
Here's a question real quick.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Mike, can I, can I entertain a motion?
Motion to, what?
Second.
To approve?
Discuss.
To approve.
Okay, well, I want my...
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion, thanks.
Could that been, can that be taken out of PEG money? Where it's, it's, it's...
This is our Town Hall computers.
But, but isn't that stuff being used?
It's not for PEG programming. It's for our office laptops and our servers.
Town Meeting could appro, I don't know, maybe not.
No, I don't think it can be used there.
I don't know, I'm just saying, if it's, if he's, if it's, if he's using for technical, I don't know if it's, if it's, fits into, you know, covering meetings and stuff.
It's not equipment for broadcasting.
I mean, this is stuff in the office work, right?
This is the office work, yeah.
But, Matt, like I said, can you speak?
Um, it's, I'm sorry.
Just state your name and position so people at home know.
No problem. Hi, Matthew Cooper, IT Manager. The hardware and software in question is for day-to-day operations for every unit within the Town other than PEG.
Okay.
So, the Town Administrator, accounting, treasury, uh, inspection, yeah, it's anything.
Question answered. Question answered.
All right, thank you, thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And the final one is from the Byfield-Newbury Baseball Softball League, seeking funding for repairs and maintenance of its primary baseball diamond Pearson Field. The work is required to maintain a suitable and safe playing field for the Town's youth, youth baseball teams. In its current condition, the field presents various safety hazards. A league, an, the league, a nonprofit volunteer-driven organization cannot, cannot afford the repair work on its own. The proposed upgrades would primarily include rebuilding the pitcher's mound and home plate, re-sodding the infield grass, and installing an irrigation system to be donated by a league parent, removing and replacing the infield dirt with more suitable baseball clay. The work would be performed by a contractor that specializes in athletic field installation and maintenance work, Oasis Property Maintenance Baseball, based in Haverhill, Mass. The estimated cost is $16,600.
So, this is the field over by the library, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Discussion? Discussion?
Yeah, I, I was, I was over there last week with, with somebody who was concerned about the condition, and these, these repairs certainly are needed and necessary, especially the, the pitcher's mound. It's a strange configuration, so, anyway.
Perfect. Okay, all in favor?
We need a motion.
Aye.
Mo, mo, motion?
Motion to vote.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, Ms. Matt. Okay. Motion was made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Anything else in your report, Tracy?
Nope, that's it.
Next, we have approved review of meeting minutes, approved draft minutes from March 1st, 2022, and March 3rd, 2022.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Warrants, we have warrants. Motion to sign warrants?
Second. Motion made?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have executive session tonight, so...
And we had correspondence, I think we just bumped over that.
Oh, I just did a correspondence. So, we had correspondence, I pulled it out too. So, we had a couple of letters from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries Shellfish closures. We had a letter from Xfinity regarding changes to service, which I'll read. We are, Chair, Dear Chairman and Members of the Board, we are committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV services. Accordingly, please note the following relative to your community. On April 26, 2022, HSN 2 will move from expanded basic entertainment Xfinity TV Starter and Xfinity TV Economy Plus to limited basic. Effective May 12, 2022, FS1 will no longer be offered as a part of digital economy, but will continue to be available in the sports and news and expanded basic tiers. Customers are receiving this notice of information in their bill. Please feel free to contact Patrick underscore Shearns, S-H-E-A-R-N-S, at Comcast.com should you have any questions. And then we also received an email from Ted Russell regarding the March 8th Select Board meeting that will be available for anyone interested in that meeting to come see it. You can ask Julie. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to...
Sign warrants?
No, we already did that.[1638.41]